Let me know when you get back.
Exactly. We'll have cool drinks for all of you.
All right.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Welcome to the January 26, 2015 legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. Welcome to the very large group that we have here this evening, and we have many, many special guests with us this evening, and we will get to that. In the meantime, I want to ask that if you happen to have your cellphone, if you wouldn't mind turning that to silent or vibrate, and if you have to take an important call, if you'll do so in the hallway, we'd appreciate it. There are emergency exits out to the right, if we need them, I hope we won't, out to the right, and then to the right down the hall to the stairwell. With that, I want to get us started. We've got a packed agenda this evening, so I will invite Pastor Stephen House to come forward from Cross Point Church at the Nazarene to deliver the city invocation. Pastor House.
Thank you. If you'd like to stand for the reading of the word, please do so. From Proverbs 2, verses 1 through 6, it says, "My son and daughters, if you accept my words and store up my commands within you, listen closely to wisdom and direct your heart to understanding. Furthermore, if you call out to insight and lift your voice to understanding, if you seek it like silver and search for it like hidden treasure, then you will understand the fear of the Lord and discover the knowledge of God. For the Lord gives wisdom; from his mouth comes knowledge and understanding." Let's pray. Lord, we thank you for this evening. We ask that you would deliver just that, understanding and wisdom that is not our own but from you. Heavenly Father, let us look to you because we depend on everything from you, and we love you in its union, and we pray and trust all these things. Amen.
If you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and justiciable, all. Take your seats. Thank you. Okay. We have a community organization presentation this evening that will be led by Theo Williams, the program coordinator for the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council. Theo, I think, is in the hallway with our guests right now. You ready? Need a sec?
I'm going to be...
Okay. Mr. Stevenson, you're going to lead us off, and then we'll go to Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council, members of the audience.
Evening.
The Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council is currently in its second year of operation. This year, it is joined by a partnership with Wycomico County. The Youth Civics Council aims to foster a sense of ownership and civic pride among Salisbury and Wycomico County youth. Good evening. The council consists of 10 to 12 high school students. Members will prepare presentations and actively participate in meaningful dialogue with city and county elected officials. The mission of the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council is to empower the youth of the community by giving them a leadership role. They will establish change for themselves, their families, and the communities in which they live. This diverse set of voices that make up this group, that make up this council, will enable the city and the larger community to make decisions that have a positive impact on the entire population. An AmeriCorps service member from Salisbury University has been recruited as a project coordinator. This young man is extremely talented and will serve this council well. It is with great privilege that I introduce this year's civics council coordinator, Mr. Theo Williams. Theo?
As Mr. Stevenson so graciously introduced, I'm Theo Williams, and I'm the coordinator this year. I'm building off the work that Ms. Brittany Goff did last year. She's the one who set up the council in its original form. I just want to give some brief remarks as to what we are to expect in the months ahead. The primary goal of this is each of these fine young individuals in front of you will be coming up with their own idea of what they would like to see changed in the community. Because Wycomico County has now formally been involved, we expect to have a lot of Board of Ed presentations, I imagine. We have made sure that they're able to have a diverse sets of tools available to them. We've partnered with Blackwell Library to ensure that they'll have access to their research there and have a research session. We're also working with Salisbury University's Institute of Public Affairs and Civic Engagement, which will enable them to meet with college students who will be doing similar types of projects. We, with the city council's help, the ultimate prize, if you will, will be having a council for the day, which is where we hope to invite the larger community to be in audience as they present their ideas to the community, and specifically to the city and county councils, and if we can get them again, the Board of Ed. We have, we're hopefully to be, going to be working with the Community Foundation as well, who will be generous, hopefully generously supporting us. So I believe that is all for right now. And then, is Mr. Bowen here? Oh, okay.
No, we have to stand it.
I see. The president of the Salisbury City Council, Jacob Day, will be presiding.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm going to ask the members of the Youth Civics Council to turn and face me, and I'm going to swear you in, and bear in mind that we've written this in the last 30 seconds. All right. So if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Stephen Williams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
Of member.
Of member.
Of the Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council.
The Salisbury-Wycomico Youth Civics Council.
I will do my best.
I will do my best.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
To preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The laws of the state of Maryland.
The laws of the state of Maryland.
Wycomico County.
Wycomico County.
And the city of Salisbury.
And the city of Salisbury.
I will openly and honestly.
Openly and honestly.
Share my views.
Share my views.
As a youth member of this community.
As a youth member of this community.
And will work toward its betterment.
And will work toward its betterment.
Congratulations.
And if I'd now have the youth members follow behind me to shake the hands of the city council, and then we will have some pictures, so Steve, you can start out, just come behind me. And while they are following behind me, I wanted to list the names of those who are here, and those who unfortunately could not make it, who will be swearing in another time. Those who are here are Taylor Creighton, Steve Lee, Michael Lee, Banjia Munusing, Kate Nicholas, Nichol, sorry. I know, exactly. Savannah Scott, Maddie Sherwood, and Dasani Taylor. The other members of the council who, because of Rock 'N' Roll cannot make it are Chantel Handy, Sebastian Melendez, Kieran Murphy, Ahmed Osman, Elisa Rivera, and Tessa Rivera. So those are the names of this year's Youth Civics Council.
All right.
One more round of applause.
Well, now that that oath is sworn in, we can just wrap up the agenda, hand it over to them, I think, right?
Right.
I'm pretty sure.
I'm good with that.
All right. Next item on our agenda, I believe Blood Bank of Delmarva is not here, is that correct? Okay. So we'll move right on to the adoption of the legislative agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda as presented.
So moved.
There a second?
Hold on for a second.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting the legislative agenda as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. All right. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Nichols?
Good evening.
Good evening, and congratulations.
Thank you. Great group of kids.
Yes.
What we have on the consent agenda this evening is the December 22, 2014 regular meeting minutes, January 5, 2015 work session minutes, resolution number 2469 declaring that Two Farms, Inc., is eligible to receive enterprise benefits for property located at 1150 Pemberton Drive, and approving the manufacturing exemption request for Jubilant Cadista Pharmaceuticals for their equipment purchased in 2013. And that would be it for the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye, and we want to thank Two Farms and Jubilant Cadista for continuing to invest in our community. We're grateful for the investment that they continue to make and the jobs that they create. We appreciate it. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the award of bids. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Miller?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We have three items this evening. The first two are change orders for RFP 04-14, the Main Street Master Plan. So the first change order is change order number three, or I'm sorry, change order number two. City of Salisbury Internal Services Department Procurement Division received a request from Salisbury Public Works to process change order number two in the amount of $48,160 for RFP 04-14, Main Street Master Plan. This change order will provide for the design of the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities on West Main Street, since this service was not included in the original scope of work in the bid solicitation. A recent utility inspection of East Main Street, which has the same infrastructure as that on West Main Street, concluded that the existing utilities should be replaced due to structural defects, root intrusion, and several other variables. It is suspected that the utilities on West Main Street are in the same poor unusable condition as those on East Main Street. Funds are available in the project account that I've noted in your packet. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number two, as noted above, to A. Morton Thomason Associates in the amount of $48,160.
Mr. Molds, maybe you can shed some light on this. It was, my understanding, and I could be wrong, but I thought the original RFP as it was written was assumed that the conditions on East Main Street and West Main Street were similar, and assumed that engineering to replace the water sewer and stormwater systems on both portions of the street was included in the original RFP.
Yeah, no, that's...
It wasn't?
The understanding, though, in terms of when the RFP was done.
Okay.
Based on the 2009 concept study.
Okay.
But we did, when we did the analysis, which was the internal investigations on East Main Street, the conditions that we found were pretty bad, and because of that same timeframe that we've got, instead of going through and doing another analysis underground, we can take that analysis and that conclusion and apply that to the other one.
Now, assumptions about the overall project cost, given pipe replacement, all of that work on West Main Street, the assumption was all of that would needed to be replaced, would need to be replaced anyway, correct?
Yeah, there were some initial assumptions on what had to be done on that, but one of the things that the original, when we analyzed and looked at that, we looked at different types of replacement strategies that might have been used, slip lining, you know, pressure pipe, rather than the traditional trench dig up and replace. So those were all things that were considered in terms of potential ways of reducing the cost by using these type of technologies. But the overall condition is bad enough that those technologies aren't going to work for us.
So full trenching replace is the only, or is the option?
Is the option to go with because of the connections and everything, and the fact that we're doing the full renovation of the, of both streets, we get in here and do that. What we don't want to do is do all this nice stuff up top, and I'm the guy that's always worried about the stuff down below.
Not have fixed the stuff underneath.
And get all this done, and then have all these kind of problems.
So just thinking about the overall project costs, has this changed anything in your mind about what we should anticipate for the overall project costs?
No, I mean, the original estimates, and we've got some refined estimates as the design gets finalized, but the initial thoughts that we have is the cost for doing this section of store will be about $500,000 in terms of that. But right, you know, when we built the project budget, in terms of, we had some contingencies, and we're a little bit ahead with Phase 2 in terms of our price at this point. But that's the rough idea as we go forward in terms of...
Phase 2 as in Phase 1?
Right.
Phase 2 being the first phase?
Right, right. So, I think it's basically what we're looking at as an investment in this kind of infrastructure, this 1940s era stuff, it's the old vitrified clay replaced with plastic pipe, corrugated metal pipes, you know, replaced with either plastic pipe or reinforced concrete.
Okay.
To give a long life, and it'll probably correct a lot of ionized potential issues and potential issues with pipe clogging from root intrusion.
Okay.
So it's an investment in those utilities.
All right, good. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Molds or Ms. Miller? No? Okay. Thank you.
All right. The next change order is change order number three for the same RFP. This is for $12,130. This change order would provide for additional streetscape design to extend the project limits by approximately 100 feet on North Division Street up to Church Street, plus a design which would reduce the number of northbound travel lanes on North Division Street, taking it from three down to two. Funds are available in the noted account, which is the same account as on change order number two. The Department of Internal Services Procurement Division requests council's approval to process change order number three, as noted above, to A. Morton Thomason Associates in the amount of $12,130.
And this was in response to the request last time through council from these property owners that they be included in that process and have some landscaping or streetscaping out front?
Yes, so that was, that's a response to that, and I think to the success of Third Friday and the extension of those activities up Division Street. So it reflects on that kind of demand for that type of use up there.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. The last item this evening is a declaration of surplus from the Salisbury Fire Department for the turnout gear. We received a request from the Salisbury Fire Department to declare 61 pieces of turnout gear as surplus. These items have surpassed their usable life and must be disposed of in accordance with NFPA 1851, so they are not utilized for further service. The procurement department requests council's approval to declare these items surplus and to allow the city of Salisbury to dispose of the gear.
Okay. Any questions?
Quick question maybe for the chief. You can do it from there, chief, that's fine.
No, I need the microphone.
It's bunker pants and, bunker pants and turnout coat? Both? Both? Yeah. Okay.
As a, as a, as a recent 10-year service.
I have another question for you.
Ms. Mitchell?
When I first came on council, we had kind of a backup of needing to supply additional turnout gear. I know none of those, from that purchase, have hit the 10-year mark yet, but this seems like quite a few. Is this in the rotation, or is this going to throw off? Are we still behind? Are we catching up? Where are we?
Well, I think the answer to your question is twofold, so I'll try to do both. In 2004, '05, and '06 was, we saw the total, total replacement of every set of turnout gear in the Salisbury Fire Department. So this is the 2005 set, thus 2015 being a 10-year service life.
Right.
Coming up in the FY '16 budget, we'll see the end of that, that big lot of turnout gear that needs to be replaced. So '04, '05, and '06, so 10 years, would be '14, '15, and '16, and then after '16, we should be able to go somewhat back to normal levels of funding for turnout gear. So we're on, we're on track.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Chief, one more question, not having to do with turnout gear, but with dealing with surplus. Do you have any hose coming up anytime in the near future?
In the spring, we'll, we'll test hose again, and we have, we have to test hose annually.
Understand.
And we will anticipate just a few minor sections of hose to be replaced.
Okay. I think in the future, we may have a use for this in the community garden for things.
Yeah. Generally, we share, we send out an email to all of the city departments for use. It can be used for firefighting, but can be used for other stuff.
Sure.
The zoo has been, the zoo and the marina seem to be the, the two big departments that would, that would like to utilize it, the marina for bulketing, padding, and the zoo used to make cradles or beds for the bears and other animals and stuff. So we try to use it first, and when, if nobody takes it, then we dispose it properly.
Great. I think we can have yet another place to put it. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions? No? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the award of bids as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And chair votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is resolution number 2470, authorizing the mayor to accept a grant and sign the grant agreement of $50,000 from Maryland Department of Transportation for the Bike Ways program. I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stevenson?
Again, good evening. In 2014, the Salisbury Public Works Department applied for a grant from the Maryland Bike Ways Program. The Maryland Department of Transportation Office of Planning approved this grant worth $50,000 for the Salisbury Bike Routes Wayfinding and a Safety Enhancement Program. The Office of Planning and Capital Programming for the Maryland Department of Transportation prepared the attached grant agreement. The scope of work includes the design of a pavement marking plan for three bike routes. Those would be the orange route, the red route, and Salisbury Urban Greenway, the installation of bicycle pavement markings for the three bicycle routes, the installation of three bicycle racks at the downtown plaza, Salisbury Zoological Park, and the Salisbury Zoo, and the design and construction, design, construction, and installation of four informational kiosks. They would be located downtown at the Peninsula Regional Medical Center, Salisbury University, and Salisbury Park. This project will result in enhanced bicycle circulation to and from downtown Salisbury. The attached resolution authorizes the mayor to enter into the grant agreement, and a copy of the grant agreement is included in your packet as well.
Great. Thank you.
And I will defer any questions to the subject matter expert, which would be Mr. Molds.
Questions? The council? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution number 2470, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Nay.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is ordinance number 2310. This is for second reading. This is the bed and breakfast ends legislation. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2310.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this is the second reading of ordinance number 2310, the bed and breakfast Just briefly, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury pursuant to chapter 17.228, title 17, zoning of the Salisbury Municipal Code, and section 4.04 of Article 66B of the Annotated Code of Maryland for the purpose of amending section 17.04.120 definitions, section 17.64.040 uses and development standards in the Newtown Historic District, and section 17.196.030 parking standards to be added to bed and breakfast ends. I assume you don't want me to read it verbatim this time, but in a nutshell, this would allow as, basically owner-occupied homes to establish a bed and breakfast pursuant to the definition set forth herein, and also, this will require the passage of a second ordinance that'll actually be the regulatory ordinance. I don't know that it's come before council, but my understanding from the administration is that we're basically looking at some, you know, minimal safety standards and things that they believe would be necessary in order to make these bed and breakfasts safe for...
I assume you'll be involved in the drafting of that?
It, I think we've already got the language done.
Really?
Yeah. It, that's the ordinance that did not need to go before the, you know, planning commission.
Okay. All right. The one thing that I think we're going to be cognizant of is, you know, today, for example, Ms. Mitchell shared with us input from Lower Eastern Shore Heritage Council, and that, you know, we want to be, you know, conducive to the places where this has worked, and one of the examples that was given to us showed some, some items that were maybe a little difficult in terms of what we'd written, in terms of the execution of actually opening a bed and breakfast, whether it's the number of rooms, or, you know, allowing an existing fence versus trees, and whether or not that fence was satisfactory, which I think to this council, it probably would be. We won't, don't want to be so prescriptive that we outlaw the thing we're trying to enable. So I want to make sure that when we bring that forward, that, you know, it's also looking at similar ordinances in nearby municipalities, Snow Hill, Berlin, Pokimoke, Prince of Sand, other places where this has been addressed, and that we're conducive to that. We don't need to get into it now, I know, but we'll bring it forward.
That was my next question, was did anyone on the council want to propose it? The only thing I can think of that you mentioned tonight was the, the issue of the screening for the parking, where we have specifically said that it's going to be greenery.
Right.
Not a fence.
Well, I, I did intend to bring that up. The more I thought about it after getting that input, it seems like this is by special exception anyway. So it seems to me that maybe we could loosen that language a little bit to allow what they bring to planning and zoning, let them make the decision what works in, on that property and in that neighborhood while they're doing the special exception, rather than us saying they have to be evergreens. Well, they can get pretty big, depending on which ones you plant there. It may, there may not be enough space between the homes to, to put evergreen, a line of evergreens in a particular place between two, two homes. I think that that's the place where, when they're bringing the, the plan forward and asking for that exception, that we should be making the decision on whether it's a fence or a greenery or whatever.
And regarding whatever that happens to be, whether it be greenery or fencing, the fencing will have to come, will it come through the Neighborhood Association as a recommendation, or will it come through the Historic Commission as a, as a recommendation, planning and zoning?
It would have to be well, yeah.
Well, I don't know that it would go through the Neighborhood Association, but it would definitely go through the, it would definitely have to go through.
Well, I meant historical and planning and zoning.
Yeah. It would definitely have to go through Historic District Commission for...
Well, I think the Neighborhood Association should have some say as to what is, you know, there in their neighborhood.
Sure. I mean, they could.
As a recommendation, you know, allow them that.
Yeah. Well, they usually have input at the planning zoning, or at the Historic District Commission.
Mm-hmm.
I know that several of the neighborhoods send the emails around with the agenda so that if it's in proximity to them, they know what's on and when and why.
And they do that.
So...
I was just going to say, all property owners within 200 feet are notified too when there's an application pending, so...
Right. So I would be in favor of removing that evergreen restriction and making that something more, speaking to the screeding aspect of it, rather than prescribing that it's evergreen. I don't have language in my hip pocket for it, though.
I would, I would support that as well. And, you know, as an extension of what we're doing tonight, I think that maybe, let this be the word going out to you now, is that I think that the Neighborhood Association could maybe come together and decide on more or less a standard, perhaps, that was, you know, conducive to the way the place looks.
One, one thing, I'm just quickly listening to your comments this evening. We could, we could leave the existing language and add at the end of that sentence, more than eight feet apart. In other words, you could regulate if it's going to be a planted barrier, you want it to be that. You could say, or other visual barrier is approved by special exception.
And do you want to say what the barrier will actually do? Say a visual barrier, but, you know, what, what... Say a visual barrier, but, you know, what, is it going to be a chain link fence? Is that, you know?
I don't think that would consist.
That would be inconsistent with the.
That would not meet the definition of a visual barrier.
That's because it's got to get past both the Historic District Commission, so obviously it would be something of, I imagine if somebody wanted to put up a nice brick wall, that might be appropriate.
Sure.
But also very expensive.
Or some really tightly woven stick fence kind of thing.
And thinking about, you know, with the screening by foliage, I think we have to write something in there that, you know, foliage shall not be trimmed any higher than X number of feet, because eventually you could have a tree that's bare up to six feet so people can walk under it, and you don't have a screen anymore.
So would you prefer to use language, be screened from direct view of any nearby residential use by an appropriate visual barrier?
Or something along the lines of, on line 91, nearby residential use by a strike planted, and just say, visual barrier from ground level to eight feet, or to six feet.
To a minimum of, it says six feet.
To a minimum height of six feet. So it would strike a planted, strike consisting of evergreens with a, or, excuse me, strike visual barrier consisting of evergreens, and strike, and placed with trunks no more than eight feet apart. That would give the Planning Commission and the Historic District Commission the flexibility to allow a fence of some kind that they found to be acceptable, that they deemed to be acceptable, because they're going to have to weigh in on it no matter what. Again, this is by special exception. And it would ensure that it's a visual barrier, whether it's planted or a fence. It would offer just a little bit more flexibility, too, in terms of what the neighborhood does want it to look like.
So that would be view of any nearby, beginning on line 91, nearby residential use by, and it says, I have now a visual barrier with a minimum height of six feet?
Correct.
And then should we say, as approved by, or the design, do you want to say an appropriate visual barrier, just to make sort of reference to the Historic District Commission and all of those other requirements?
Extending from not higher than one foot, and to not.
Mr. Lennox, do you have a thought on this?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I think we should wait.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chris. I think the reference to suitable visual barrier, and the fact that it's under the special permit provisions and the Historic District provisions, make it pretty clear that that will be evaluated that way.
Okay, so if that language, suitable visual barrier, should give enough leeway to the Planning Commission and the Historic District Commission to interpret what they deem to be an appropriate visual barrier, whether it's planted or fenced, correct?
My answer is yes, with the clarification that it's the Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'm sorry, Board of Zoning Appeals, BZA and Historic District Commission.
That's appropriate for both of them to make that finding.
Okay.
Should we put in ground level to Mr. Spies' point, from ground level to a height of not more than?
Six feet for that.
Six feet.
If it's a visual barrier, it has to be a visual barrier. I think if a barrier is a barrier, if it starts five feet above ground, then I don't think it is.
Right.
Okay.
But if it starts a foot above ground, is it?
Yeah, and I think we'd leave that up to the Board of Zoning Appeals to determine that.
I mean, yeah.
You know, they're going to get plans submitted to them for approval. And your word that you chose was, was what, a suitable?
Suitable visual barrier.
Okay.
I will make the motion to make those changes.
Okay.
For seconds.
All right, we have a motion and a second for that amendment? Thank you, thank you. Any discussion on the amendment? We think it's clear? All right. All those in favor of the amendment as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay. The other items that were brought up in the email was the bedrooms, which, you know, I thought about as well, increasing that number today. But as I look back on it, I mean, we're talking about four, once again, we're talking about homes with four bedrooms, and there aren't many that have more than that. So I offer for discussion.
Yeah, that was, that was.
Whether or not our number is correct.
That was my question. I think some of the homes that she's referencing, Princess Anne's, for instance, maybe a little larger and have more bedrooms. I don't know what the average number of bedrooms in Newtown is that we're looking at. If it's four, then three's appropriate, obviously. This is owner-occupied, so there has to be one for the owner. One piece of language that they did have in there is that there could be no more than one bed in each room.
I thought it was two beds from what they had.
Princess Anne was, oh, I thought it was.
Oh, was it one bed?
I think it was one.
We allow two casual and transient rumors per room.
Per room, right, assuming they're sleeping together. I mean, we're thinking couples, but it may be, may not be, it may be siblings, it could be, you know, we don't know.
Could be angry couples.
Don't make me sleep with my brothers.
Right. I'm comfortable letting the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Historic District Commission deal with those questions. I think there's enough clarity here that, you know, we've defined the rooms, the number of rooms, and I was forgetting it, but let's not forget that this is the number that the Newtown Association requested, so probably most appropriate in that regard.
Right. I'm good with that.
Okay. Let's see, are there any other amendments? Any other issues for discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2310, this is again for second reading, as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you all. The next item on our agenda is ordinance Number 2311 for second reading. This is the abandonment of the Wayne Street roadbed between Power and Bateman to Salisbury University. I entertain a motion to adopt ordinance Number 2311.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to abandon an area of land being the improved roadbed of Wayne Street between Power Street and Bateman Street. The portion to be abandoned is shown on the attachment to the ordinance. The patched area would be the part that would be eliminated. The city will reserve unto itself the right to, you know, aneasement for all the utilities and other in-ground things that might need to be repaired there. But the maintenance of this area, other than those easements that the city would maintain, would be the responsibility of the recipients.
Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2311, as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinance Number 2312. This is the accompanying ordinance, eliminating parking spaces on Wayne Street and Power Street, repositioning some of those spaces. This is again for second reading. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2312.
So moved.
Second. Okay. Mr. Tillman?
Okay, this, again, this ordinance here, I think, is best understood just by making reference to the attached plats that are shown there. There's basically moving some parking places, eliminating parking places, and making a room for a driveway for a new parking lot as a result of this.
Okay. Any discussion, questions, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance Number 2312, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay, next item on our agenda is ordinance Number 2313 for first reading. This is the amendments to the occupancy provisions of the Salisbury Code. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2313.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Tillman?
All right, this is an ordinance of the mayor and council, excuse me, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, amending Sections 15.24.280 of the general section, 15.24.16, excuse me, 1640, violation of occupancy provisions, and 15.24.110, denial, nonrenewal, revocation, or suspension of a license. The section there, whereas the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance is experiencing a rise in overoccupancy violations, and whereas due to this rise in overoccupancy, there's a need to strengthen enforcement for occupancy violations, and whereas a reduction in the allowed occupancy of nonconforming uses where overoccupancy has occurred is desirable, and whereas the addition of denial, nonrenewal, revocation, or suspension of a license registration will make enforcement more effective, and whereas the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance recommends approval of these proposed code changes, now therefore, for their being enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, the chapters 15.24 and 15.26 of the Salisbury Code be amended as follows. And that would be the first section there, we've included 15.24.280, the general, A, B, C, D, and E. The first change is what's shown under paragraph E on line 56, and that would now read, "An unlawful structure which is ordered to be vacated or condemned shall, in the case of a dwelling, be permanently reduced to the maximum occupancy allowed for the applicable conforming use, with no additional occupants permitted pursuant to the dwelling status as a nonconforming use." The language that was previously there would accomplish the same thing in the right districts, but not in all districts, because there are districts that would allow, you know, more than two unrelated, and so this language would cover that, and it would be whatever the appropriate amount would be for that district, would, that's what it would be reduced to.
So if the code allows for four in a part of the city, this would allow for those four?
This would allow for four in that part of the city. Previously, it was only, the language was just directed specifically to where it would be two unrelated people, which was just in those restricted residential districts where that was applicable. But, you know, in some of the, you know, multifamily places and stuff like that, you can have higher numbers. Then the next section, 15.24.1640, violation of occupancy provisions, beginning on line 64, would read, "If the Department of Neighborhood Services and Code Compliance determines that the number of unrelated occupants in a dwelling violates the occupancy provisions established by this code, the number of unrelated occupants, not including the children of either of them, shall be permanently reduced to the maximum allowed for the applicable conforming use, with no additional occupants permitted pursuant to the dwelling status as a nonconforming use." And again, this section was originally, when it said comply with the city code, that was really probably better language than we had in that other section, because it would go to whatever was appropriate for that district. But we thought, since we were changing the language, you know, in the other section, that this should match it. So that's really the reason for that. And then the next, section 15.26.110, denial, nonrenewal, revocation, or suspension of a license or registration. The first change there will be in the first paragraph, beginning on line 75. But to read that section, "If, after any period for compliance with this chapter has expired, the NSCC determines that a rental dwelling unit or rental dwelling unit owner fails to comply with any of the licensing or registration standards set forth herein, or with the occupancy provisions of this code, NSCC shall initiate an action to deny, revoke, suspend, or not renew a registration or license, and mail the owner a notice of denial, nonrenewal, revocation, or suspension of the license or registration." Again, this was adding specifically, previously, this section only dealt with a licenser issue. It's now, having added to it, the occupancy, overoccupancy issue that we're trying to address with this legislation. Whereas, again, that's the, under section B, excuse me, section A, line 80, the word "registration" is eliminated, because we're not dealing simply with registration issues. We've expanded it. Paragraph B, the specific reasons why the rental dwelling unit fails to meet the required standards, again, we're taking out the licensing or registration specific reference there. And that is it for the changes in that section. The rest of it is just the language, just so that you would have benefit of that. This, along with this legislation, was discussed in the work sessions, the administration's policy language, which I think has now been completed and reviewed.
Yes.
Okay. This is to supplement that.
And can we have Ms. Phillips, do you mind coming forward? Thank you very much. I just want to make sure I understand, and I think I do. I just want to make sure I understand, and I believe I do. But the policy language, as written, allows for, or creates a situation where, once an investigation, after a determination has been made, an initial determination, the investigation period begins, that 10-day period of time, if the structure remains overoccupied and the landlord or property owner has not taken action to evict, it's at the end of that 10-day period that a, the policy that we've discussed here tonight would kick in, would take place, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That's when the order to reduce.
The order to.
Issue.
Okay.
And that's when the suspension would be issued also.
All right. And I think one of the other questions that's come up for me, and I want to make sure I understand this, too, is that what, you know, when the property owner takes action during that period of time and says, you know, okay, I'm going to, you know, pull up a lease, for example, and it says, you know, I can evict you if you have, you know, brought a buddy in who's sleeping on the couch and has been here all semester, you know, once they have taken, begun that action to evict, will that be considered sufficient action on the part of the property owner?
During that 10-day period?
Yes, if they take action to evict, I mean, I realize the eviction process is much longer. But if they take that action, or have the, you know, the people on the lease remove that person, will that be considered sufficient action?
Correct. We come back, everything's being taken care of, sure.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, everything's been taken care of.
Being taken care of.
Being taken care of.
Yes.
So have begun that action, okay.
Yes.
Just want to clarify, I want to make sure I understand that. And then, gosh, what was the other question I had here? It'll come to me. Any other questions from council?
Well, there was one question, and I brought it up previously, and it was brought to us again today, about how long someone has to be there before they're considered taking up residence.
That was it.
We don't define that. I was pretty surprised to actually hear that when I asked before. I mean, if someone's there during spring break for the week with their boyfriend, girlfriend, whatever, or maybe it's even a parent that's staying there for the week during spring break, whatever, how do we, how are we defining that they're living there? Because the definition that's given, basically, and what your response was, if there's toothbrush and clothes there, then they're staying. I mean, there's got to be some leeway to have visitors in your home.
We wouldn't make the determination of someone living there off of a visitor. We use common sense when issuing orders to reduce. We have to show a pattern of occupancy, so a visitor wouldn't constitute occupancy in our eyes.
What would define a pattern of occupancy?
We would, we really look at it over a month or two. We really look at it for upwards of probably several months, showing a pattern of cars, that sort of thing. I mean, we wouldn't do it just over someone visiting over a week or two.
What if they're visiting every weekend? I mean, I'm just trying to understand where that line is.
Over how long the period of time?
Well, I mean, you've got one person going to college, UMBC, and one going to college at SU, and they're coming down and visiting, you know, maybe one weekend, one goes there and the other comes here, but over the whole year, it's every other weekend, or?
It could be that someone lives there on the weekends. That, to me, could be occupancy.
See, I have an issue with that.
It's important to understand, if I could interject, that oftentimes, the majority of these issues are brought to us as a result of complaints. And the residents nearby know whether or not these occupants are there every day, getting up, getting into their car, going off to work, going off to school. It's not always college students. That's much different than the girlfriend, boyfriend who stays at the property during the weekend. So oftentimes, the surrounding residents are familiar with the pattern, and then from there, Neighborhood Services will start doing a surveillance, if you will, taking pictures of license plates and that sort of thing, keeping an eye on the property. So to say that you can't have a college buddy come in for the weekend because he's, you know, occupying the structure because he sleeps there, that's not the case.
Is there a reason? Is there, is there a reason not to set a standard? Is there some reason that we wouldn't want a bar, a minimum bar?
No, we can create a definition for occupancy. That does not, and and from this, I think that we've learned that we probably should. So from this, we can.
Just so it's a little, you know, less subjective if we get into that process. And then then I think, you know, when you find, if it goes for for Housing Appeals, something like that, then we've got a clearly defined standard.
And I understand that most of these are complaint-driven, but there are three types in my mind of complaints. There are those that are legitimately concerned. There are those that are complaining because they have a beef about something maybe related, maybe not. And there are some people who just like to complain, period, whatever they can find. And I I'm just concerned that this has such staunch consequences that just being complaint-driven without us being really clear about what is and what isn't occupancy and what is and isn't allowed, leaves, I think, opens us up for a lot of problems.
There's a great deal of latitude that the housing official has in terms of determining whether or not there is actually an over occupancy case. This initiation of dialogue and ten-day opportunity for the property owner to interact with the housing official, you can oftentimes work a lot of those things out. So I didn't mean to imply that simply because somebody calls and says, hey, the property two doors down is overoccupied, boom, the letter goes out.
I didn't take it that way.
So there's a good deal of discretion that the housing official has in order to determine whether or not you truly have an over occupancy case. And on many occasions, if there's an interview, an interaction with the residents, they'll tell you right there on the front steps, yeah, five moments later. So you know, you know, right then that you've got an.
Is it possible that we could set that standard in this ordinance that would, or?
I think that's a big discussion.
It's going to be very difficult, I think, to nail that down.
Yeah.
That's going to be a big discussion.
Very difficult to nail.
The word is quagmire.
Good one.
So it is considered on a case-by-case basis, given the particular circumstances, and then there are, there's always that opportunity for appeal. If the property owner disagrees with the ruling or decision that the housing official has made, he or she can appeal that to the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals within twenty-one days of the notice. So there's a way to have due process.
What's the, okay, that that's fine. I think that's a fair answer, and I don't necessarily need to step in that quagmire tonight. But can you give us an update on the status of the properties that are currently under investigation that we identified, the forty-four, I think it was? I know that number is maybe increased, is that correct?
It was, it had, it had, I believe it was forty-eight the last time, the last meeting that we.
That's the number you.
Last work session we had had. Without having the the case history and, I'm sorry, the the computer database in front of me right now, I wouldn't be able to give you an exact update. I can provide that to you.
Okay.
I know that a good portion of them should be coming into compliance, very near compliance. I know that quite a few of them that we were initially investigating had called and the tenants had confessed, yes, we were overoccupying, because I know I took quite a few calls myself. The tenants called and said, yes, in fact, we are. And they had planned to be out by the compliance date.
Okay.
But I can provide to Tom an update on those cases.
Yeah, I think that'd be good to know.
He can share.
Okay. Well, that's good news. I mean, that's how we want it to go. We want them to come into compliance.
Just one other thing. This primarily deals with rentals, over occupied, over occupancy in rentals. If you could provide me your policies, procedures, or what you do in an owner-occupied residence that very well could be overoccupied as well, one hundred and fifty square feet per person, you had a large, large family in a really small house, what do we do about that?
Same thing. We don't treat it any different. We don't treat.
Well, you can't take their registration, you can't take their four-to-two, what do you, I mean, same thing.
We don't, right now, we don't treat it any different because we don't have this in place. So we do, right, currently, we do the same thing.
Sending the letter.
It's a good question, but to to try and provide an answer, I think it would be the citation.
Same thing, we bring a citation. If they fail to vacate, we issue citations. Until this, if this is created, this is, this would be the only difference that we would do. But if we have a homeowner occupied, just like you said about the square footage, if they fail to vacate because because of the square footage, we would issue citations.
Have we had, have we had an issue with, have we issued any citations with owner occupied?
I would have to look back, but I think that we may have because I know myself, I've issued orders to reduce based on square footage for too many, for living, for sleeping space.
Okay.
So I know that I have, I have, it's, it's, I'd have to go back and look, so many cases.
Mr. Tillman pointed out, too, that you could always condemn the structure because it would be unlawful.
Okay.
And I believe, actually, that's the course of action that we took, we condemned.
You can condemn the structure even though the structure itself is not out of compliance, it's the occupancy of the structure.
It's the way it's, if it's overoccupied, the building code allows you to do that. I mean, it's on, it's not safely occupied, so you you're condemning it for that purpose.
Well, I think my questions are answered for this evening. Other questions from council?
Curious question, perhaps. How are you handling claims that people are members of family, like with college students, when you show up and there are six of them in there, and that's my cousin, that's my cousin, that's my brother, et cetera, et cetera?
We have had claims, few claims. We've asked them to provide proof. Once we do, they just don't mention anymore.
Okay. So the cat's out of the bag on that one, kids, all right?
We unadopted.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. So, interesting.
It is difficult work.
Yeah, no kidding. I think that one of the issues that we need to broach at some point is figuring out what constitutes occupancy. I realize that's a quagmire, but we're going to have to do that at some point because that's an easily challengeable piece of this.
It is, that's why.
Yeah, I think if we can figure out how to define that without keeping somebody from letting their girlfriend or boyfriend stay over on the weekends and, you know, find a way to resolve that, I think that makes, that'll make a lot of sense. And I realize that may be a very long process. But in the meantime, the last kind of lingering question I have in terms of the overall structure of this, you know, and again, trying to, trying to make it a useful tool, is, and I know I've advocated for this policy piece being a policy piece and being left to the department to manage the implementation of, what I, what I want to make sure we avoid is a lack of clarity in the law that's clarified through policy. You know, I want the law to be clear as well. So I guess I put that out there for consideration at council, whether or not this is the right path. I've felt all along that it is, addressing through policy, the suspension process, the number of days, things like that. So it could be changed, you know, to address situations appropriately. But again, I just want to bring that up for consideration by council.
Well, I've expressed my concern before that basically because so much of the way things will happen, the critical parts of it are in the policy and not in the code. If this is not officially adopted by council, the policy is not officially adopted by council, then it can be changed by any administration at any time, effectively changing the law, and we have no say over it.
I think changing the execution of the law, for sure. I'm not, but it wouldn't change the law. What I'm trying to figure out is whether or not we want to shape the execution of the law explicitly today through this and, or not. I could go left or right on this, but, you know, I'm leaning toward keeping it the way we've got it personally, in my my own vote. But I just wanted to raise it one more time for consideration.
I'm not sure I understand how you mean that.
Well, it doesn't, yeah, it wouldn't change the law. It would change, again, how it's executed.
Right, but for instance, a ten-day grace period, that's in in the policy. It's not in the code. So that could go away tomorrow, and boom, you're right back to loss of four-to-two exemptions and any other exemptions and a citation on day one. And that was, that's not our intent here. We've had a lot of discussion to get to this point. It's not our intent here, yet that's what it would be. And the law would authorize that because we haven't adopted the policy, we just adopted the law. And it is, that's a pretty substantial change.
Any other thoughts? Any other issues, questions, concerns, anything else anyone wants to add to the discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to add Mr. Tillman, with Mr. Tillman's advice, as to the location, language that the policy as presented today is explicitly made a part of this code.
So are you, are you asking to integrate the entire policy into the code?
That the, well, I guess it could be that way, or it could be that council must approve, by a council, that this will be managed by a council-approved policy. We approve the financial policies, we approve a lot of other policies that are very critical to how we operate, that are the the nuts and bolts of the law, which is a framework. And I think this is one of those cases where i- if it's not all in the code, then council needs to have the authority and responsibility for approving that policy.
Okay, well, starting with the idea of integrating this policy into the code, is there a second? Okay.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, that's what I was going to do.
All right, so we do have a second for discussion purposes. Discussion.
Could you give me some language that you might have here?
Well, I thought I had gotten myself past this, but then the more we discuss, so I did come up with, I didn't bring language, but the more we've discussed it, the more uneasy I am about it.
Well.
Mr. Tillman may have some, some language. I know, like I said, our financial policies and some of those, they have to come to court council for approval before they're implemented or changed.
But, right, okay, so let's.
Or something like that.
So if I could make a suggestion, let's, let's take that concept. You know, I think, I think we need to call the question, vote on this, and not adopt this amendment, and.
To incorporate this entire thing.
And, and, right, and and go back to that second concept you have of of council approval of the policy. Because I think the policy as written is, is a really important and great part of it. And I do think it should be, the policy, I don't think it should be in the code. But I I can understand that we adopt the, you know, the personnel policy, we, or we approve the personnel policy, we approve the financial policy, and I could see us approving the occupancy policy, occupancy enforcement policy as well. So, I mean, that's my recommendation, to call the question on this amendment, to vote on this amendment.
That's fine.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendment as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No, no, nay.
Unde, wait, wait.
Wait. I'm not clear what amendment's been presented, what we're. Say it again.
The amendment as presented, Mr. Tillman, is the adoption of everything in the policy incorporated into the law.
Okay. Before, if you're.
Please.
We're going to vote nay.
Please. Go ahead.
If you were to vote yes, then I would want to put very specific language in here to accomplish that.
Okay, I don't think we're going to.
Okay.
All right. Then all those in favor of the amendment as presented, please signify your support by saying aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Chair votes nay. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
To, I'll make a motion to add language to this ordinance, or to this section of the code that incorporates council approval or requires council approval of the associated policy as presented today.
Is there a second?
I'll offer a second, yes.
Okay.
Question?
Discussion, yes. Mr. Heath.
Being the new, being relatively new, how do you choose which policies you approve and which ones you don't? What's it based on?
Are are there policies, you know, that council has been privy to that we haven't approved? I mean, financial document, the the financial policy and handbook, the personnel, human resources policy, all of that comes to council for approval and for edits.
There are policies and procedures throughout the city that the council has not been privileged to or approved or adopted. I understand the importance of this particular piece, though. So I suppose if we've adopted a financial policy, then we might would consider adopting this policy as well.
I think the only difference is probably whether someone felt it important enough that it remain unchanged without council approval to make, to make such a request.
Okay. So what you're saying is that you think it's important enough?
It is to me.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? All right. Call the question, all those in favor of the amendment to require council adoption of this policy, set of policies, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Okay. Mr. Tillman, that language, can you refine that and add that to the appropriate place before second reading?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait.
I was hoping you weren't going to ask me to do it tonight.
This is first reading.
Because I'm going to have to think about where it should go and.
Thank you.
By midnight, according to Mr. Heath. Okay. Get on it.
No overtime.
Generous.
All right. With that said, I just want to reiterate that I think the policy document as written is well-crafted, and I think that's what we should adopt. Is there any other questions, any other comments, any other amendments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two, three, one, four, again, this is first reading, as amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Excuse me, that was two, three, one, three, not two, three, one, four.
I still vote aye.
Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number two, three, one, four, for first reading. This is setting the rates for the emergency medical services. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance two, three, one, four.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Tillman?
Okay, I think when this was, ordinance was last seen, this was not in this table format, which has now been corrected to include that. It's an ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, changing the rates for emergency medical services, whereas the City of Salisbury provides emergency medical treatment and transport services, including basic life support and advanced life support, and whereas the city bills patients for their use of emergency medical services, and whereas the city desires to increase the rates for emergency medical services as is permitted by Medicare and all other insurance providers, now therefore be it ordained that the City of Salisbury hereby adopts rates for the provision of emergency medical services as follows. The, if you need a detail of what these, each of these are, you're going to have to ask the chief, but I did call him, so I at least know basically what it is. But the basic life support base rate for a resident is currently four hundred thirty-one dollars and would be increased to five hundred dollars. For a non-resident, it is currently four hundred and thirty-one dollars and would be increased to five hundred and seventy-five dollars. The advanced life support one emergency rate for a resident is currently five forty, five hundred forty-six dollars, would be increased to six hundred and fifty dollars. For a non-resident, that same level of service would be increased from five hundred and forty-six dollars to seven hundred and fifty dollars. The advanced life support two emergency rate for a resident is currently seven hundred and forty-one and would be increased to seven seventy-five. For non-residents, it would go from seven forty-one to eight seventy-five. There's also a mileage for a resident, and that, the current rate is eleven dollars and eighty cents, is that per mile, chief?
That is.
Yes. And that would be increased to thirteen dollars per mile. And for non-residents, it would be increased to thirteen fifty per mile. For oxygen, it's current, there's currently no charge, that would be increased to a proposed rate of sixty. And spinal immobilization is currently zero, would be increased to one hundred and twenty dollars. And the basic life support on-scene care, which is currently zero, would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Advanced life support on-scene care for a resident would be four hundred and fifty dollars, and a non-resident, five hundred and fifty dollars. And at my understanding. And my understanding from the chief is that these designated, uh, descriptions are as accepted by the, you know, the medical providers in, uh, Medicare and Medicaid.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
I make one suggestion. Uh, next to the mileage, should we put in parentheses, per mile?
I think that's a good suggestion, since I just tripped on it tonight.
Yeah, otherwise someone could argue, say, it's eleven dollars and eighty cents, I don't care where you come from. Or thirteen dollars, sorry. So, I'll make a motion to amend line, the table in line sixteen, next to mileage, to put in parentheses, per mile.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Spears, all right, any discussion on the amendment? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the amendment as presented, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any other amendments, discussion, comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of ordinance number two-three-one-four, this is first reading. As amended, please signify your support by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you, Mr. Tillman. All right, we do have one request for, uh, public comment. Ms. Davis?
You ever play in basketball?
Yeah, right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
My name's Alita Davis, and I'm a Newtown resident. And I wanted to say how happy I am as a resident of our oldest historic neighborhood that we will finally have bed and breakfast in this town. Uh, when we moved to the neighborhood nineteen ninety, I started discussion with Mayor Tillman and Mayor Irtan, Mr. Stevenson, Mr. Holland, about getting bed and breakfast to this town, how valuable they would be to our economy, tourism, um, and our neighborhood. Um, as most of you know, who have ever had an old home, they are extremely expensive to keep up. And, um, our values have dropped because of what's happening in the neighborhood, with multifamily homes largely responsible. So, I am hoping that with, um, the chance to have some bed and breakfast in the neighborhood, that will do a lot for our, um, um, the value of our homes. And also, um, I, I just think it's wonderful because as, as the chairman of the board for Poplar Hill Mansion, we have tourists come in all the time. We have weddings, we have big birthday parties. And just doing tours, people come in and say, where are the bed and breakfasts? I had to stay in Georgetown. Why, why doesn't your town want our money? And now, when we're having events, we can direct them to the bed and breakfast. They can eat downtown, they can go to the zoo. Um, it'll bring a lot to our, our town. And I mean, it, it's, it's wonderful because you'll come and stay in a house one time, next time you visit, you'll stay in another bed and breakfast. And you'll, you know, most of these people that do bed and breakfast wants, want to stay in a variety of homes. And because our homes are all different styles of Victorian architecture, I think it'll be a lot of fun for our visitors. And one thing I, I, I managed to hear, I just left the doctor's appointment, finally got free. I've been incapacitated since November, so I'm really happy to be out and walking around now. And I'm sorry to have missed all the earlier meetings. But I did hear, one thing I was happy about, the trees, um, maybe considering other methods of fencing, because a lot of us, uh, to have trees as a border, that would take away from the parking space as well, and then perhaps spread into the neighbor's area. Uh, where we live, there is a driveway or an alley sep, uh, separating the homes. There's not a lot of room to be planting trees. And I also don't know that the neighbors would appreciate all that foliage with the houses being so close together. And one more thing that we possibly may consider in the future is, um, I know there was discussion of only three bedrooms. Well, I got news for you. Most of these homes that are qualified to be bed and breakfast have a minimum of five bedrooms. We, for example, have a, five with a potential for nine. If somebody wanted to redo, we don't have an attic, we have an entire third floor with four full bedrooms up there and two halls. So, uh, most of the homes do have quite a few bedrooms. And also, consider the fact you're going to have to have your kitchen inspected by the Board of Health. You're going to have to make a lot of expensive changes in the house. So, I'm not sure if three bedrooms are going to give you enough income to pay for what you're going to have to do to be an operating bed and breakfast. But anyway, I'm very excited, and I think it's going to be great for the, the City of Salisbury. So, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And, uh, some of those policy changes you, uh, you mentioned, Ms. Davis, are things that we can certainly look at again in the future if this is not conducive to actually causing, uh, a change in some of the uses. Uh, so that's something we can certainly address. Mr. Rehneer, did you... That's okay. Uh, yeah, we can, we can fill out a form for you, if you wouldn't mind.
You can do it after.
No, no, you can do it after, yeah.
Good evening, I'm Blair Rehneer with Rehneer Development Company. Um, I, I came here tonight a, a little incompletely informed, and I appreciate the discussion on the occupancy legislation. Just a couple of quick comments. Um, the revocation of a four-to-two allowance in our districts is very, it's a big deal. Or a rental license, that, that's, uh, very important. When I looked at the law on lines, uh, sixty-four to sixty-nine, the suggested modifications, I read it to understand at the time neighborhood services determines there's a violation, at that point, the occupancy rights are lost. There is no ten-day grace period in this, in this legislation, and that, the conversation evolved past that. I, I think that might be one of the things that we might wanna include in the code, because that's, that's critical. If, if something happened and something happened to one of my properties, I can guarantee you, within ten days, I'm gonna be on it. I'm gonna be working on the eviction, I'm gonna be working with the city. But the way it's written, both in, um, the fifteen-twenty-four, sixteen-forty, and there's lines sixty-four to sixty-nine, and then a led, line seventy-five under the, um, section one-ten, it, I read it to say, you know, you know, maybe the people change, the interpretation's different, that at the point neighborhood services determines there's a violation, that's when all the triggers happen. You know, and, and I don't know how policy integrates with building code, but I, I don't know. But that might be one of the things that would be important to say, uh, in the, in the code. I think it's a great idea to define occupancy. Uh, that's so vague right now. And, you know, the boyfriend-girlfriend thing, the friend from out of, from out of state, uh, that, that would be helpful, uh, just for, I think, the whole process. And other than that, I wanna really thank you guys for taking the time to consider it, because I, I know that's, uh, there's a lot of detail you guys looked through, and it's very important for us to get it right as you put it together, and, um, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rehneer. And, uh, you know, just a reminder, this was first reading, so there will be another discussion two weeks from now where we'll adopt the final policy. Yes, sir. All right, anything else for the good of the order from council? All right, hearing none, we're adjourned.
Drive carefully, everybody.